Want to get going. Good afternoon, welcome to the Select Board Workshop today for July 28th. Our annual workshop for the discussion about Select Board priorities. I hear a echo.
I do too, but I think it might be them.
There's an echo, yeah.
Okay. We have an agenda here, generally speaking, let's try to keep this meeting to within a 90-minute total timeframe. But first, in a way of introduction, I just wanted to briefly, especially with the benefit of Matt and Sophie, some of the history in the last years, some of the lessons learned regarding setting priorities in my four-year tenure, and Mark's a little bit longer. But, you know, we've gone through a bit of a learning curve in terms of priorities, and in the sense of, you know, there was one year I can specifically remember where we listed a lot of, you know, ordinances that we wanted to get done, but it was a great list. By the way, there's a lot of stuff like that needs to be done, which is absolutely a priority. But then we found out that we were stressing one of our department heads to 90% of his time to accomplish some of that, and that was wrong. Well, we've got to be careful to balance the workload on these priorities, because this work is over and above the normal workload that happens day-to-day. So over the past couple of years, I've actually seen this priorities workshop become more efficient. The idea, I was intent obviously, is to, Audra, give her a clear message as to what the priorities of the Select Board are, so she knows where to focus her resources, to the extent possible, and not to constantly divert. And by the way, the backdrop of some of this too gets into the issue of many people during the year, and we encourage it, should come to us with ideas and requests of ideas for Camden, whatever it might be, and we'll certainly discuss them, but we need to, you know, get them into the process somehow at some point in time, the key word is "some point in time", because you can't do it all today, especially given our town meeting form of government, which is actually not the fastest thing in the world. But with that said, one of the things that this year is even more, much more an improvement, Audra's taken the time to look at the current list of priorities, which you have a copy of in your email and hard copy in front of you, the actual list, and in addition, she's taken the time to do a spreadsheet, basically to show where that workload is. And with that intro, Audra, I'd like you to introduce us to this, well, basically priorities workload that we are currently at.
Yes, so I kind of, you know, started by just putting a list together of all the current projects that we have going, and it was, you know, projects that are very distinct from sort of our day-to-day operational activities that we do to sort of keep things, you know, keep the ship going. And once I did that, I thought, well, you know, I need to kind of group them by where they're, you know, what's the status of them. And then as I looked at it again, I thought, well, I also need to group them in terms of how they relate to those sort of broader level priorities that the prior Select Board had established over, you know, a series of years. So that led me to the, you know, the spreadsheet where I've tried to create a matrix that gives you sort of a visual idea of, you know, what the projects are, what sort of, you know, broader grouping of priorities they sit under, and what their status is. So as you can see, there's a lot, there's probably like, and, you know, I'm certainly not thinking that there aren't things that I've forgotten as well that we have going on too, but we have about, you know, 47 distinct projects that are in some state, whether it be sort of, you know, we're currently implementing them in terms of, you know, construction, or, you know, other stages of like current implementation, or, you know, we're at a stage where we're going to be ready to do it, a construction project, or some other implementation of this project within the coming year. It could be a project that's in the study and planning or engineering phase this year, or it could be something that, you know, we know that we've got it lined up to be planned for this year, a good example like the INI study. So, you know, we're not currently doing that, but we've allocated resources for it, we have a proposal, and it will be underway soon. So, you know, I've tried to group them so that, you know, everybody can look at them in terms of what's the broader category they sit under in terms of Select Board priorities, and where are they at currently. And I thought it was really important to do this, because, you know, we kind of are at a point, or not kind of at a point, but we're certainly at a point now where I think it's really important to focus on what we have going, and doing those projects really well, and executing them really well. There is some room for, you know, within this list, kind of determining what could be moved up, or what's more important, and getting a sense from the board of that. But I think that a really important thing that I'd like to get across is I'd really, I think that taking on anything new or distinct from what's on this list would just, you know, not be a good idea at this point, given everything that we have right now.
So, looking at the list of projects, we have to assume that we are at full capacity, right? There's no, all the man-hours we have for the year are budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and some, and some.
And some.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to add something, we needed to subtract something?
Yes.
So we're in a zero-sum game?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good to know.
Go ahead, Allison.
It might be good at some point for you to like help us go through, like, the types of things that take a lot of time, and the, because I know, like, you know, we all hear things throughout the year, and there are like little things that are, you know, good ideas that can be kind of like implemented, and might just be a matter of reminding, you know, when we're doing a project here, like, remember we talked about putting a bench there, and, you know, those kinds of things can be brought up? But like at what point, you know, how do we balance these like little ideas that come up that are sort of the fun, you know, for some citizens and for us too, like the, you know, fun part of doing this, and like the collaboration part? Where does it cross the line for you into like, okay, now that's, now what you're talking about here is a project that needs to go on a longer list, or, you know, help us flag, like, and when we do tell you those things, to kind of flag those for us right then, too? Like, just so you know, sure, feel free to tell me that, but, you know.
Yeah.
Kayak racks at Barrett's Cove, done by the town, is, you know, something that we know is going to take a lot of time, and we're not ready to, I don't know.
I think that's a very good point. I think that there are some things you can affect real quickly, and it's not a big deal. Some things, by the way, can affect frankly by just taking it to a Select Board meeting, and just putting it on the agenda, and just saying, you know, we're going to deal with this, and assuming it had, but to that, just like agenda items or anything else, if there's a request for these things, we have to have a funnel. And that's, because I'm not sure, Audra, I'm not going to speak for you, but from my experience, you just don't know, it depends on the issue, and you'll deal with them at the moment they come up. But we can keep them on, as we should, agenda items, by the way, in parallel. We should keep them on a spreadsheet someplace where anybody can input, and we can manage it as the meetings go on out, but the same thing with these items, as Allison's suggesting, get them into a bucket, and then we can, you can help us to be that filter.
Oh, absolutely, because, you know, a lot of the time, you know, when things come to any of us, we have no idea what the full implication of executing that idea is going to, you know, entail, so.
Right, and, well, in that process of bucketing them and, you know, keeping them, we can also determine whether or not some may be thrown out of the bucket, because of whatever reason, not under our purview, for example, that can happen. Or it can be easily implemented by just taking it to a Select Board meeting and approving it, and because Sally and Joe volunteered to do it in the town, it doesn't really take, it doesn't cost us anything to do it. Those are going to still be there, but, you know, I'm sure all of you too get constantly, people come, I've always said, nobody's ever come to me with a bad idea.
No.
May not be, you know, well, it's usually there. They're well-intentioned ideas, let me put it that way. But I think, and it's difficult to say, no, we're too busy to handle that, I don't want to say that, I want to say, we'll put it into consideration.
No new ideas.
Yeah, right, they can't do that, no, because we have an extremely creative populace in this, in our town, we're very lucky to have that. And you never know which one may be, you know, something we didn't think about collectively. But I think if we had those two buckets, let me call them, I guess a spreadsheet, set up, so we could input that information from me, or Matt, or anybody here that we hear from the public, alternatively, you should have the same bucket, which is not subject here today, but of agenda items, where, you know, we really want to get this on the agenda at some point, so I can help to manage the process, because we can't get everything into next week's agenda, quote unquote, but we can certainly spread them out with priority.
And I guess another thing, like, a lot of this is strategic and proactive, we're always going to have things that come up that we have to react to, that's just sort of the nature of local government. So, I mean, you know, that's a big sort of qualifier on all of this, is that any day something could pop up that sort of takes away everybody's attention and time, and, you know.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Sophie.
So, with the different teams I work with, we use an issues log, and I'm happy to work with you to set it up, so we can, you know, sometimes there are ideas in the board that comes up, we can park them there, and I'm happy to work with you on logging them, so we can track them. But I was also going to say, for the priorities, it might be useful to have a scale, and say, you know, this project is going to take over 100 man-hours, this project is going to take 30 man-hours, this project is a day man-hour. So to have an idea of the resources we need to put up, and helping us prioritize. Because right now, I look at the list, and I, some of them are multi-year projects, so I know they're fully committed, but others are less intensive, and maybe if we could scale them, just, you know, but grossly scaled, I don't want any department head to do a study, but just, you know, ballpark it, like, how long is this, you know, the kayak rack, is it a three-hour, or is it a week long?
Right.
That kind of things.
That's probably easy to do on the log.
Right, exactly.
Also, that's most important on the log, because
Exactly.
As I go through this list, there are some things on here that are, you know, mind-boggling in hours, and there are some that are not, just what it is, and some that you don't know, don't think into them.
Yeah, absolutely. But I'm happy to work with you on this.
But I understand, I understand. But it doesn't, it's only through the list, even if I say some of these are not such a big deal, but there's 47 of them, and it doesn't take much of a magician to figure out that we've got, we created, good news, we created a workload that's quite high to get a lot of, and we want to keep pressure on doing a lot of things, but I was a little gassed to see 47 items also, varying levels, and varying status also.
Hold on, what's the difference between this, though, and we've seen other spreadsheets that have been the, like, capital improvements?
That's different.
Yeah, so, I mean, you'll
In some ways, it's, but a lot of them are the same thing.
Find a lot of the projects on here are on the capital improvement list as well, but there's some things that are, it's more of a study, or it's more of a policy thing, or, yeah.
We also have to remember, we are in the fiscal year, we are budgeted for this fiscal year, so we don't have, we have funds, but we don't have unlimited funds to release to do some of these. We could turn some of these into capital projects, but that's another issue, and there's a backpack issue here too, in my mind, that is, as we approach next year, and not now, but is our staff adequate for the load that this town is currently facing, because of all kinds of priorities?
Right, I mean, that's why the capital project fits into it too, because when we're doing a big capital project
Yep.
That always ends up taking, you know, brain power and response power, and, so.
Yeah, sure, very true. We can slowly review.
Are there any big capital projects that are happening that are not on this?
Being a capital project?
Like, I mean, we've got the wastewater treatment plant on.
Yeah, wastewater's on there, but wastewater treatment plant.
I guess like buying fire trucks and stuff doesn't take
Well, that's
Brain power from most people.
And
But it is happening.
It's true, and it'll be delivered in April. Yeah, you're right. But like, you know, the regional fire-based DMS, that can, that has peaks and valleys.
Yes. How many man-hours on that, Audra?
Yeah, there, I mean, there's so many you could look at, and
I agree.
Like Sophie said, they're multi-year.
There are certainly some we could, I'm sure we could eliminate, I don't feel the need at this point to have to make that decision, but I think there's, this is mind-boggling, it really is. And I can see why, and there have been, on all scales, Audra, there has been some things that I've seen fall into crack, and now you know why. You know, that's important for us to understand, it's not because of lack of interest, intent, or capability, it's just a load.
But I guess
By the way, Audra, to reinforce the point you made, this work is in and above their day-to-day jobs.
Right.
So, you know, we have code enforcement to deal with, we have public works to deal with, and normal stuff, and then they did doing these other things in parallel, like the side of the building out here with the new drainage
And that's not even on this list.
No, it's not even on the list. To help save the building, you know, I mean, talk about Herculean, I mean, my God, it's, you know, we're literally saving this building, thanks to our public works department, and eliminated a big chunk of money we would have had to spend with somebody else to line the basement. I mean, that's, those things, they're not even on the list.
Right, and I mean, and that's, well, and I see that as kind of the operational day-to-day side of what I do, is kind of matching the sort of skill level and the focus of each department, so that we can fulfill some of the, you know, the projects on this list. So, you know, we've had a lot of changes to the public works department, where their focus in the non-winter seasons is completely changed from what they used to do. Like, they never used to take on projects on their own, it was more of just that sort of like maintenance kind of work, and, you know, the, but, you know, we need them, if we're going to be able to achieve a lot of the things on this list, I need a public works department that can take on projects. Same thing with parks and recreation, so, you know, it's sort of building the departments so that they can achieve a lot of these longer-term goals and strategies that we put in place, but that takes time as well, so.
Well, we had a discussion during the recent budget session for this year's budget, when, you know, we talked a lot in the Budget Committee about Audra possibly needing some help, additional staff, and we did, there were actually replacements in the snowball, but we added one, as I recall. And we also contemplated one in planning and economic development. We didn't implement that yet, but this is good fodder for thinking about that as we go forward. Because I know, for example, that one six on my mind is number eight, which is the Ecode 360 for all town ordinances, wonderful effort, is a first step in helping us to identify and play with ordinance more effectively, so we can determine what we need to clean up. I know there are towns adjacent to us who are, have full-time, they've hired full-time entity to help them to review the existing ordinances, never mind the new stuff, which is usually modifications, so that's a load in itself, that's not a small piece, there's hundreds of man-hours in there.
And I was kind of, you know, I went into the code office to kind of speak with Jeremy and Rosie about the implementation of that, and the, you know, online permitting and licensing system.
Right.
And, you know, Rosie gave me some really frank feedback, that like, we put a lot of time into setting up a, you know, a workflow system internally for permitting. And, yes, it might not meet the need of the public to be able to track workflow and permits and all of that, but it meets our need for internally getting our work done, and for us to kind of stop and change to a new system is going to be cumbersome and difficult and frustrating for us. So, I guess it's like, we got to, yeah, I mean, I don't, I want to put something in place that's going to make things better for them in doing their work, and being able to efficiently issue permits, and do inspections, and all of that, but also, you know, fulfill the other need of being able to have something that's public-facing, and easily gives information. But those things, like, I need to, getting in place a system that does both those things, and is compatible, makes them compatible with one another, and isn't creating additional burden on them, that takes a lot of planning and thought, and it's not simple and intuitive. So I guess, like, you know, there is a, something that seems like it could be easy to implement, as in always, and that was a good reminder for me after having that discussion with Rosie, that I need to be sensitive to making sure that anything new that, you know, we're putting in place, isn't creating a new problem and inefficiency.
Right, this, you know, this would be a good piece of paper to have on our website, because, you know, this helps all of us to, I get requests written otherwise for ordinance development, and they're all fine, but we need to make people understand when we turn around and say that, you know, we're kind of loaded right now, unless there's literally a fire burning, we're not going to be able to take on additional activity without, you know, changing, increasing staff, or whatever we might do. But I don't think the public is certainly aware of this.
Of the number of things we're
Well, I mean, back when I saw this, when Audra started drafting it a few weeks ago, and it was probably half the size, it kind of opened my eyes up, it's what we, it's a positive, and at the same time, what we've started in this town to implement, we've implemented, and what we've gotten done in the last year or two, and what will get done in the next year or two, is quite, quite huge.
It would be interesting to have a list of the things that have been accomplished, because sometimes you still look in the future, you know, one, we can go and thank the people that have done the work, and say, thanks, I didn't even realize you did this, and I appreciate that, so that we know what's been done. That would be nice to have.
And it's a good point, Mark, in fact, you know, I don't, I did not know, myself, didn't know how far along the building drainage outside here was, had gotten along until I, you know, stumbled literally into the excavation on the side of the building, and I said, wow, they're way far along on it, and still more to go, but you can do it when time's available, but, you know, that's the kind of thing we just don't see.
And it's being mapped out in our GIS database, so that for the future
I heard that.
Town employees, they'll know, oh, this is where the gutters go.
Exactly, exactly. This is where the building leaks, because this building was actually rotting itself to death. You know, so it's, nobody's fault, it's just, it's no building, but, yeah, we're going to, we're going to fix that, and we have fixed it going forward.
So I guess, you know, because it is a new board, some of the broad-level priorities, you know, is there any sort of, like, is there a level of comfort with them, or ideas about, you know?
So, from a process standpoint, we have a, we're fully committed, we have no more room, so what do you want us to prioritize? Do you need us to move things forward in subsequent years? So what's the expectation of this, I'm sorry, maybe I'm jumping the gun, but
Excellent question.
But because we know we are fully committed
Well, there's, I think this list in total is probably more, that can be handled as it is.
So we need to, we need to
I think prioritization
Reschedule some stuff to
I think prioritization of some of the bigger items is always a good idea, even if we don't cover them all, but there are some here that take, you know, 100 man-hours, or some that take 1,000.
Right.
But that's a big difference, and, you know, but I also, at the same time, which is special for you and Matt, may not understand yet, some of these projects, feel free to ask, that's part of this meeting, also, as to what this might involve, and that may, because I'm not sure you understand every one of these, because you've only been on board for a couple of months, but, yeah, anything, it's a long list, and it's daunting to, I really rely on Audra to tell us, this is our priority list, and Audra, if something's slipping down the list, we need to hear from you, and you're the gatekeeper, you have to be, Mark.
I'm going to say a couple of things. Number one, I think it's important, you tell us if there's changes here that you think would be important, because you're closer to this than we are. But number two, the world is changing, we can't just stop and say, okay, that's it, this is all we're going to do. You know, in the early years, when I was on the board, we didn't have this set up like this, this is wonderful, to look at the events, and we would come in, and we would all have a, I think we should do this, and I think we should do this, and we think we should do this. There are probably some ideas we have that I'm interested in hearing, because you never know where important things are going to come, but it's nice to have it all laid out. I mean, one of the priorities four or five years ago is, we knew the wastewater plant was under need of repair, we'd gotten the report, and nothing had been done, so finally, in this meeting, you know, we decided, wait, we need to put the wastewater plant on this. So there may be some things we need to add, and change things around, but knowing your priorities, and what you think is important, and what you think we can delay, is important. I know, an example, I'm always complaining about the tennis courts at Ragged Mountain Field, but I understand that they're down the list, and I can live with that, as long as they're on the list, and they'll get there eventually, that's fine, because, you know, things take priority.
True.
The other thing, the way I look at this list is, time is another currency, right? It's another resource, so if you think of time as money, or just, you know, a flow, what are the things that we expect, and again, ballpark, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold your feet to the fire on this, right, but what is reasonably going to be done this year, that's going to clear up like a chunk of time, that we can bank for subsequent year, and to start planning other projects?
We can slowly review the list, and Audra, you just scan down, tell us which ones are going to be a man-hour sponge for 2021, 22.
Why don't we just go down the list, on the numbers?
And also, there's a whole section that says, "Status to be determined," so I would think that's in some ways an area where she's asking us
True.
Like, we see all these other things, and
True.
I get questions all the time about like, you know, tannery, sideware farm, so that, there are some like definite things that this board needs to say, we want to put this on the back burner, or don't we?
I guess those are, those are some of the, I think, big questions that I have for you today, are those "status to be determined" things.
Well, some of them are not all in our control either.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Like the snow, I mean, some of them, Snowball Lodge, under, I think that was under, like, underway? I don't know.
It is, it is
Planning study and/or engineering
We might need more information about that, because, and how much do we want, because any number of these things, if, because you've put them all under, like, underway, so that means, going to be working on them, so that tells me, any one of these things could end up hijacking all of town staff time, based on
Right.
An email from the Ragged Mountain Foundation, or the
Right.
So, I'm not sure we do want to give you the, like, go-ahead to be working on all these, or
No, and that's, that's great feedback for me, like, if you see anything on the list, and you're like, oh, well, yeah, I know we've talked about this, but I don't, you know, that's something that, as a group, you collectively think should go on the back burner, in service of, like, more urgent or more important priorities.
Yeah, there's a lot of those, actually, but I think, I think many of these are currently in heavy engagement, and on this list, Audra, why don't you just tell us which ones are in heavy engagement, we can just check those off to start there. We know, for example, number one is in heavy engagement.
Yes, yeah, so, and we're looking at the sort of written list, not the matrix.
Correct.
So, yeah, on the written list, I would say that everything that's currently underway, or everything that's forthcoming for 2021, you know, all of that stuff, you know, we were pretty committed to it, the exception on, you know, to that could be the online permitting and licensing system, because it could be that we make different decisions about how we're going to do that, and what we're going to do with that. So the planning study and/or engineering currently underway, so with the housing affordability, we're fully committed with the, well, the planning board has, you know, passed the zoning ordinance amendments, and the open space subdivision stuff, so that's coming to the Select Board, and, you know, at this stage, it's all in process. You know, I think that
And that's heavy.
Yeah, all of the rest of them are all happening, and the one exception would be the Snowball Lodge. be the Snow Bowl Lodge, because even though there's work going on with that, it, it could stop at any time.
But the paid parking management system has not started.
Right, well, the, we've got a consultant engaged, he's actually here doing work now, so.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's started.
Yep, and I'd say, yeah, the, the rest of them, with the exception of that one, are all happening.
And, and would you, and are they heavy?
Yeah, like, for the Snow Bowl Land and Water Conservation Fund, so we've applied for a grant, and that would pay for snowmaking equipment upgrades, the trail improvements, you know, the Snow Bowl Tubing Hill and relocation of the conveyor lift, you know, that's one that I could have put it under implementation or planning and engineering, because the, you know, a lot of electrical work and moving that, that's been done, and then there's a few other pieces of that planning side of things.
And the Snow Bowl Lodge?
The Lodge, now that Rosie came on staff, she's helping, and is an architect, she's coming up with some, yeah.
Basically, the only thing that's on, that's been ongoing sporadically with available manpower from Rosie, was to determine, do we need an 8,000 square foot or a 10,000 square foot lodge out there, and then to use that to get preliminary budget estimates, and then that's decision-making time. Because from that point forward, now you second down man-hours, now you second down, you know, somebody to design it, somebody to do all these things, coordinate it with the land trust and all these other people that we have to work with, so this is just a formulation, I don't think it's been more than 16 hours spent on it this year.
Right, and I guess, you know, to that, you know, when the decision was made to install the geothermal system out at the Snow Bowl, you know, it was done town meeting approval and everyone was fully aware and the question was asked and the voters were made aware that, you know, it was designed with the idea of having a new lodge and having it, it being big enough to have the capacity to heat a new lodge, so it's something that is, you know, it hasn't been specifically committed to, but it's been implicated in, you know, the redevelopment when that was voted on, and then the, you know, the Siemens project and installation of the geothermal system, so, you know, it's kind of one of those things that, yeah, it's, it's been committed to, but it doesn't have to be something that we tackle within the next year.
Okay, question, do you want to, do you want to answer questions about some of these as, to dial into them a little bit as we go along? There's one thing about the, the Snow Bowl trail improvements is, in, we had four, five, six years ago, there'd been a lot of discussion about, you know, if we have less snow, and, and even if we continue to have great snow, we'd like to make more use of it in the summer, and mountain biking has, has been a big thing, and there was a discussion, there was a whole plan that came in, it was very expensive and, and sort of crazy, but there was a chance about improving trails and such, so eventually, the triple lift could be used for bikes and we could, we could make money in the summer, when we would attract a lot of people, and we would make, you know, substantial monies from selling, you know, lift access to, to mountain bikers, and, and I don't believe that's been discussed in a number of years, so that's maybe something for the future then, not ready yet for that, okay?
Yep.
My, my other question, some I've been thinking about, has been traveling around, I've had some, I did go out of town a few times recently, and in Massachusetts, I've noticed there are now quite a few charging stations for electric cars, but they're no longer just, you know, there's always the Tesla ones you see over, but they're now commercial ones where some people use credit cards to do, some have commercial, have video screens and commercials on them. Would the paid management people be aware of those, and could that be part of the parking recommendations so that we can install that, because I'm seeing, as I'm traveling and as you watch, you know, current media and stuff, the, the electric transformation of vehicles is coming and it's coming strong, and it's something that I think we should be prepared for.
So that's, that's a thing that's a big project, and I was approached by Efficiency Main and CMP with all these incentive programs, and I was very skeptical of them, because it's like, we would be paying money to have people charging their cars in spaces, like, it would take up parking spaces to be charging cars in them, I feel like if that's going to happen, somebody should be paying the town a lease fee to do that.
See, that's what I'm seeing.
But that's not how they're structured, it was like, we needed to pay to install this infrastructure, so I was, I guess, like, my point being, I felt uncomfortable with what was being presented, it wasn't like a, anything that I felt like I would be doing my due diligence to bring to the select board and be like, oh, look at this offer from Efficiency Main or CMP, and it just is, it's a big project and it's going to take a lot of time and a lot of research, and, and I guess I didn't, and that's another thing, like, I could have put it on the list, but I didn't, because it's just, like I said, if we're going to do that, we have to take something else off.
Well, that's what I thought, maybe, maybe if we, if we go to the consultant and see...
No, it, that's not, it wouldn't be part of that.
Yeah, because the one thing I've seen the change in, in just the last year is, it's no longer like, you know, we're paying for people to charge their cars, but it looks like commercial stations are all, it's like mini gas stations, and either they're getting commercials or making money, and so they should be paying us, so that may be available out there.
I guess part of, like, I feel like it's a really reasonable question, that the people that sell the kiosks for parking, like, what we're kind of thinking about for a kiosk-based pay-for-parking system, that there would, that some of those people would potentially be aware of systems where you can pay for a place to park and charge your car.
Oh, I, I think it's a completely reasonable question, but like, it's not part of the scope of the study.
Can you ask him if he has the wherewithal to?
Sure.
Discuss that as well, just, I, I wanted to give it...
But I guess, like, my, my point is, and totally reasonable to ask, and I can do it, but regardless of what his answer is, it's a whole, I just need you to understand it's a whole other project.
Right, no, I understand, but that's why I, I listened to what you said, and I said, if we can give it to him, instead of giving it to, I don't want to give it to Jeremy, I don't want to.
Well, I mean, okay, so, it's, no, and I want to, I, this is me, me trying to push back and do what you asked me to do. It's a whole other project, even if I have a consultant doing it.
Right.
It doesn't mean that that work goes away and that we can ignore it and we're not taking on a whole other project, because I still am going to have to review and understand and dig into and look at options, and, so it's not like I give it to a consultant and that's taken care of.
I understand, I, although I would say, from, you know, thinking about the town, seeing how the world is changing, I would be prepared to try and take something off of this to make that a higher priority. That's the one thing I came into the meeting thinking about, just seeing what I'm seeing in the rest of the world right now.
And I, I think that plays into, and you're a good point, and I think it's going to, I can think of a couple like that, and it's probably what we should put on our bucket list to evaluate and see how we can slip it in and/or replace something else, rather than flipping a coin with something's on the list and taking it off now, we don't need to do that. We can put it on, I think we should, I think it does probably two or three others, we put it on this list.
Parking lot, I have a...
Exactly, I think, I think it's a great thing to do, and, and we can try and figure out a way to squeeze it in by manipulation and we'll bring that back.
And I think it's good, it's good what you're doing right now, but then I think, like, it's, we still, like what you just did, saying it's a whole other project, is helpful to know that we can't just, it's not easy, but, but then we still have additional questions about, because we're going to be out there explaining why basically we're just not going to do anything, and it's, and so sometimes when we push back with more questions, it's not that we're like, disagreeing with you.
No, this is, this is exactly the kind of conversation we need to be having about it.
Help me understand why this is a bigger thing and why it can't be like a matter of, you know, adding $5,000 to a study or, like, because I think Mark was trying to be responsive to the.
Yes.
Idea that we're not just going to give it to some committee and tell Jeremy to work on it, because we know that that model takes tons of time, but is there an opportunity to use more contingency funds so that it can be proper, it could be evaluated to the level where you don't have to be super involved?
And I'd say, I'd say no, me and Bill need to be involved no matter what, but like, like Mark said, we can still kind of put it on the list as knowing that it's something that, you know, we want to look at, it's important to look at, and try to evaluate what, you know, what could fall off, that this could take the place of, that you're all comfortable with.
You need to put it on the desired list, I call it, I call it a bucket, just a place to put it, and hold it, and do exactly that, and explain to people why we're doing it, and trying to figure out a way to slot it in, we're not saying no, we're saying it's a good idea, and, and I think we just need to figure out the man-hours to it and, and see what, well, we can do that, but we'll probably have to drop three, four, five, six, whatever, you know, that's fine.
And I can, and I can see...
This is across the back page.
Let's approach the county and see if they can do it.
There you go.
No, but I can see also, if we're starting to look at more solar power, solar power at the municipal level, tying that piece with the solar power at the municipal level, so I think there are different entry points, and we have it on the parking lot, so.
Yep, yep.
Awesome.
Okay, and the rest of the list, Audra, you kind of stopped at, and didn't get into the engineering piece, which was next, and planning forthcoming, which is, of course, the I and I, et cetera, et cetera. Anything on there that stands out to anybody or comments, or certainly whatever any one of them is?
One.
Pedestrian safety.
Mm-hmm.
Put it out for the first direction.
No, yeah, go ahead.
So is this the time to, so it looks like here, the, this is more like almost a proposal than a, so we've got the rapid slashing beacons, which is like a one-day-ish project that DOT, well, I know it was really complicated over there, but...
Oh, it's going to be just as complicated.
I get it, but, but, but it's not the level of the Route 1 from Stop and Go to Rennys, that's a different, those are orders of magnitude, like, massive difference, so that's a little confusing to me, and that one would jump right out at me as something that, I mean, it's, the, it's definitely a priority, there are many pedestrian, like, safety priorities, that would be, that's like another downtown drainage project, level of engagement, massive resistance, right-of-way work funds, which, so I think if you have like a, kind of like a vision for that, I think that could be good, I also think that John Street is...
Well, that's, and that's kind of the question with this, so, you know, we're, we're fully involved in that pedestrian safety program, you know, we did those workshops, we have, you know, feedback on what the problem areas are and what the priorities are, and so this is more putting something in the pipeline for the future, so, I guess it's a, and this was sort of like a placeholder for this discussion, so, I guess it's a question of we have the opportunity to work with DOT and leverage funding that they want to commit for another big project, and we've kind of narrowed it down based on the priorities list and the feedback we've gotten and what seems like it, you know, is something worth biting off that, you know, that sort of Route 1 from Stop and Go to Rennys, that would close the gap between what's currently been done from the project that is just wrapping up now in the downtown area, to the project that'll be picking up from Quarry Hill to Maritime Farms, so, you know, this, that could sort of close that gap and fix, you know, you know, fix that sort of pedestrian linkage.
If we just go all the way to Quarry Hill, why would we stop there?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we would, I mean, Rennys is the last real big sort of crossing in that area that, that needs to be fixed.
Park Street, Park Street needs to be.
I mean, all of them, all of them do, but I mean...
Rennys is a nice landmark, you know?
Sure, yeah, anyway, but like, that, that would be the idea, it would be sort of the, the Stop and Go intersection to Quarry Hill is probably a better way of describing it, so we could kind of work with DOT and focus on putting that in the pipeline for like 2022, and that, and putting in the pipeline means getting it sort of planned and engineered like in 2022, and then construction would be beyond that, looking at 2024, 25, or we could look at John Street and Pearl Street to Route 1, Pearl Street intersection to the John Street intersection with Route 1.
I see, in terms of sidewalk?
Yeah.
Sewer, maybe.
Yeah.
Sewer, too.
Yep.
So could we do, so the DOT, there's a DOT grant, like, how much money is there, you always have all this pretty well schemed out.
I think we're looking at probably about half a million.
Do you think each of them are a half a million dollar project, or?
Well, I think that's, that's how much we'd be looking at in terms of grant funds from.
Oh, that, and then...
Yeah, that's, that's more than half a million dollar project for those two.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Way more.
Well, right, but for, like, I guess, is the John Street project about the same level of, which one's more expensive, or which one is?
And again, that's, that's hard to say right now, because we're not even at planning, yeah.
Could we use like ARPA funds for 1 and?
We could use ARPA funds for the John Street project, because there's a sewer component, we can't use it for the Route 1.
Really?
Yep, because there's no sewer, and the ARPA funds would all be for just the sewer component and nothing else, the pedestrian, you know, any sidewalk we built on John Street would be incidental to the sewer work that we'd be doing.
Be the, be the, the piping, not the connections?
Um, well, yeah, we would just put in the main and then, you know, anybody who the main passes would put in their own lateral.
We just have to put that piece in.
What is ARPA?
Oh, sorry, that, and that's another, so the American Rescue Plan Act.
Oh, thank you.
Funds that the town's going to get.
Right, excellent.
I have not seen the acronym.
Yeah.
How far, how far down is the John Street, I mean?
Pearl Street.
So it would, yeah, it would be Pearl Street to Route 1.
Or on the Pearl.
And, and the idea is it would create that, that connection, so, you know, you have a pedestrian link from Pearl Street to Hanford.
It really needs to go all the way to, to what's, to Mary Gardens, or what's, whatever it's called, Mary.
Mary Spring?
That's where, I, I had a couple of experiences of seeing people like wheeling theirs, themselves down that road in the rain from the nursing home, I mean, just like, in traffic, it's, it's kind of awful what we're doing to these people that, like, it would make all the difference, they have no cars, like, they're just stuck there.
Right.
Right, so this is a good, like, you know, what, what's more important, the...
So I have a question, because you have Pearl Street on the planning study, engineering currently underway, and we're, we're basically trying to weigh those options between Pearl Street, John Street, Route 1, right?
Well, Pearl Street is, again, that's committed.
It's committed.
Yep, that's happening.
So we're not going to revisit it, but what we're seeing here is that we have two options, right?
I, I mean...
I mean, there are things that have been identified in the downtown master plan, the comprehensive plan, like pedestrian improvement, like long-term goals that, that people have kind of voted on as priorities and...
You're going to have to, better than like a smorgasbord, we have, my recommend, we have to pick one of these segments to attack at a time, rather than, you know, the, we talked about the sidewalk up to Quarry Hill, and then there's the, then there's the John Street piece, and there's probably others, by the way, in the town that, you know, if you add those all together, that's, that's a big project and big dollars.
So I have another question, does it make sense to study them together and plan for them together and stagger the construction then?
That depends on the DOT.
Ah, we're not...
They're kind of, they're kind of waiting for us to pick.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm sure their funds are not unlimited.
Right.
So what's the most expensive for John Street, then? We should try to figure out basically how much the John Street project would cost, and look at doing that one on our own with ARPA funds and maybe some other kind of thing we can get somewhere else, and then just go for it with, you know, DOT's been focusing on Route 1, let's try to do that with...
That we can definitely do that.
Didn't they finally come in with the right funds for Route 1?
No, that's only for the other piece by the...
That's the, that's the upper piece, but that...
That's Cross Street, Maritime, across from Hanford.
The part down to Stop and Go and all of that, where it's like on one side of the street, there's this sidewalk that's super, super narrow, and you end up stranded in the Stop and Go parking lot, and the other side, you've got the steps.
Right, right.
And the tree that nobody wants to hurt, so everybody usually just throws up their hands and says, it's impossible.
Does ARPA, would ARPA cover sidewalks as well as sewer now?
No.
So the sewer, the, if we want a sidewalk on John, there's still going to be a cost to that, the sewer, great idea, let's find out how much there is and get that piece funded by ARPA, but, you know, to scope it out, you got to do some work.
And I mean, and before we, you commit ARPA funds to anything, you might want to kind of weigh all that, too.
I agree.
Because there's, you know, there are other priorities on the list that we could...
Other uses, and ARPA funds are not that huge.
No.
And they flow over two years.
Yes.
So it's not like we're going to, $400,000 over two or three years.
How much? Close to $500,000.
$500,000.
$500,000 over how many years?
Two years.
Two years. Yeah, we've talked about it in the budget committee, it's all coming back.
Sorry, what's that?
Would DOT do the right-of-way work for Elm Street?
Yes, but they...
Mark her words.
Yes, I'm not, yeah, I'm not volunteering to take that on again.
Yeah, don't go there.
But that wouldn't happen until all the engineering work has been done.
Well, this, this brings back to Audra's point of, this is Harper, Harper, ARPA fund planning.
You're sounding like a Mayner, Bob.
Yeah, I'm getting, getting there.
You sound like my mom. You sound like my mom.
You win another piece of chocolate just for that. Just for sounding like a Maynor.
Remember, I was born in Boston. I think we, it is a bigger issue of what we might apply to five hundred thousand. This could be one alternative. So we, we have to, that's what this whole thing is about, is taking the time to plan what that ARPA funds, what options do we have? Now we've identified one.
So that, what you're saying is that?
I don't know.
He's got a plan.
Uh-uh. No, I don't.
Well, okay.
So the next step for this is for the select board to add that to the agenda and think about how to plan the ARPA funds, or?
At some point, yes, absolutely.
And I guess just to give you an example, so I was very hopeful that given the number of Knox County towns that have joined Midcoast Internet Development Corporation, or, you know, haven't necessarily joined yet but are committed to joining and want to be involved, that it would be a no-brainer for the county to dedicate some of their ARPA funds to that effort. But that's not the case. So it's looking like it, you know, might be important for the municipalities who are part of Midcoast Internet Development Corporation to have some skin in the game and, you know, allocate some of, you know, the ARPA funds that are coming directly to municipalities to that effort to better leverage, hopefully county, but maybe not, but definitely state and federal funds for broadband purposes. And that's a permissible use of ARPA funds. And another is, you know, there are other areas where, you know, we've been talking about doing sewer expansions for years, or, you know, maybe that they would be good candidates for opening up for housing development, particularly affordable housing development. And a real barrier to that is the fact that they're not currently connected to the sewer. So, you know, that's kind of like dual purpose, sewer expansion and affordable housing. Do we, do you want to do that? So there's,
Yep.
It's, it's all about just sort of like weighing of the priorities you've listed, what's more important and what's a better use of those funds.
Fundamentally, Sophie and Matt in particular, the, this waste recycling plant we have is, has plenty of capacity to handle more.
Not the pump stations, but the.
Not the pump stations, but. But the, but the grow, the users, we could add a lot, a lot more. Some pump stations are limited, it's true, but, but that's, that's part of the thinking. But I agree. To your point, absolutely. Audrey's been saying this for about a number of months now. We're gonna get to a point very soon, we're gonna have to take a look at how we want to use these funds. Okay?
Hold on, if, where would Sagamore have to, what pump station would that have to connect to?
That would be either, it depends on how it's done. So it's either a new pump station or there.
One of the ones that's not so good.
Dave Wolstridge is all kinds of different options for how it could work.
I have to turn into a pumpkin now.
John?
I have not signed on this, so.
So one more thing to add to your list is if you get a chance, think about the remote participation policy, because there.
Well, we have it on the list.
Yes.
See it on that.
No, well, that's not.
It's on the select board list.
That's more a select board action, and we have a hundred of those that we have to get to, policy revisions.
Thank you, Bill, that's a good one, though.
Right, it is. We have, we have a draft.
The power is still out. CMP is informing me every ten, ten minutes, basically.
It's nice of them to do that.
Yes, it's still out. It's a tree, the cause, but we, there's no Osprey. In the text messages, they don't.
They don't know about this.
It's a tree.
I don't think they, they probably can't check off Osprey on the list or something.
Front to page two.
They don't want to tell us.
On the other side of town, on, on, on the Chestnut Street and Route One and.
Wow.
A tree?
Well, but the Osprey could be the tree. I mean, maybe they have three codes, anyway.
Let's get through the, get through the rest and we get to the status to be determined.
Yeah. Any questions about any, like?
Hold on, you're, so, so harbor planning and redevelopment, Liman Morse, is the ball in our court or in theirs?
So there's kind of two.
Or should I not ask this question?
Kind of two sides to.
No, but I mean.
So it's there, you know, Liman Morse has sort of their own.
Right.
Kind of stuff going on, and they need to kind of figure out how, you know, what exactly they're looking to do, how they want to ask for, do they want to partner with the town or not in doing what it is they're gonna do? And then we have, you know, our own infrastructure, our own public infrastructure that we need to plan for. And I guess we need to kind of figure out, do we want to, given everything that's happening on the other side of the harbor, use that as an opportunity to sort of leverage what they're doing for our own purposes? So it's, yeah.
It's complicated.
It's complicated. And it's, it's, you know, do we want to, do we want that to be sort of like a partnership or an opportunity to do more quicker, or do we want to just kind of take it at our own pace?
This is getting very close to coming to a select board item in August because of their thinking, and then we're gonna have to compare notes about the various alternatives and paths. That's, that, that's the activity that's going on. Yes, to Audrey's point, Liman Morse clearly is trying to decide whether or not this is a joint project or a, in, a corporate project.
Right.
That's a big difference.
Yeah.
But it still affects.
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, but the Liman Morse owns the, 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 the infrastructure they want to put in, or the town owns it.
Well, they can't use their grant, they can't do it unless we, it, the grant requires it would be ours.
Did the grant require them to, for us to own it?
No, no, I mean, so this is the thing. If, if it's going to be, if they want it to be a public-private partnership, there's some benefits to them in that.
Right.
In that they don't need certain ordinance amendments to make their project happen.
Right.
You know, and there, there are benefits and drawbacks to both the town and Liman Morse in that. However, if they want to, if they just want it to be sort of their project, there are certain things that they're going to need changes from on it, you know, ordinance amendments, and there are benefits and drawbacks to that for both of us as well, so.
That direction is what'll probably come to head in the next month.
Right.
Discussion.
Okay.
Yep. So it's, yeah, for them, it's really deciding what, what they want to do and kind of coming to us and saying, this is exactly what we want to do and exactly what we're gonna need to move it forward.
So this is another one that I feel I could turn into a lot of staff time that is spent behind the scenes and.
Well, it's inevitable, like with any sort of.
Well, no, people come to us with things all the time and, like, ideas about things. And sometimes they get from the code office a, meh, that's not really possible. And sometimes they get a, let me show you how we could change an ordinance to make this all happen. And.
Well, I mean, it depends. A lot of it comes down to, like, anyone can request a zoning ordinance amendment. There's like a process for doing that.
But I think, you know, like, based on, based on town priorities, we encourage staff to try to treat certain requests differently than others because it's like, oh, well, this matches up with four things in our comprehensive plan or whatever, so we might want to put more, I'm, I mean, I'm not making an allegation, I'm just saying, it's just a fact that some things end up taking more staff time than.
Sure.
Others, based on, if somebody came to us and said, we would like to put a Walmart over at the Knox Mill, that would probably not result in a huge amount of staff time because it would be a known kind of like no. And Jeremy's not gonna spend like hours and hours walking somebody through how we might be able to accomplish that. But this one, I would, I think it's in fairness to Liman Morse and, and everybody, we should probably try to talk about it at the select board, all the detail, you know, some details, all of that at the select board level openly sooner rather than later, so that it doesn't turn into a situation where town staff has put a bunch of time in or, and then it gets to the select board level.
That's exactly.
So that's coming in August, right?
That's exactly, it's coming in August.
So it's just been going on for quite a while. I mean, we've said so many times.
Because the developer hasn't made up their mind yet. And until they do, we don't, we don't want to be sitting down discussing at a select board level if they go out and say, now we changed our mind, and we got to review it all over again. Remember, they started out with a municipal.
The very last thing that was said in public, we had it on our, our agenda. So we have, we lose perspective sometimes of what was said in public. It was, here's the plan, Audrey laid out a, this is gonna go to the harbor committee.
Oh, yeah, and then, and then they changed their mind. And what I said to them was, I, I, we're not gonna talk about this again until you have your path. It's not our job, it's your project. You need to tell us exactly what you want to do and how you want to do it. We're not going to be the ones to lay out that path for you because you already did that. Well, like, you know, we sort of got to a point where you said that this was your path, we laid it out.
Yep.
And everybody had an understanding of how that was gonna go, and then you changed your mind and completely changed the path.
We believe they've changed their mind.
Well, okay, they, they said to me that they changed their mind, and then the path changed. So I said to them, I don't want to see this again until you are absolutely sure of what you want to do. Because every time you change the path.
Right.
It hurts the town because we're trying to give people predictability about how this is gonna go forward. So that's, that's what I'm, you know.
That's, and that's just what I wanted, that's, like, I think sometimes that kind of stuff gets said, but Bob, the way it was, it was a little too vague. And it's good for it to be just said in a public forum so that.
We have no, basically, so the ball's in their court.
Ball's in their court.
And we're hopefully gonna discuss it at the select board in August.
But I, but I definitely see that as kind of one thing where we do have advance notice that this is happening. We have advance notice of basically what it's gonna be, but there is a component of it that is reactionary, and we just need to accept the fact that, you know, there, there's gonna be something big that comes from them. We all know the broad outlines of what it is, but we don't know exactly what we're going to need to do to kind of figure out what that path forward or not is.
That is.
So there's nothing for the harbor committee to be looking at right now, and there's nothing for CDOC to be.
No.
Not yet.
So we can accurately say when people ask us, yeah, there's just nothing that we can.
Right.
Give you to look at.
But soon, we.
And I mean, and putting it on this list is, you know.
Yeah.
I, I see it as a combination of some of those, like, operational, day-to-day things that could come up, that we have to drop everything for, the select board, the.
But this is a case of a developer corporation bringing something to the table, hopefully, what they really want to do. And then, they could even identify and then walk away from it. But if they don't walk away from it, its, its status on load is much higher to staff than obviously if they don't. So that's, that's one you can't really ignore on the status to be determined list. But, but there are others, there are other four, five others here that are, are time-consuming, Tannery, Sagamore, Green Energy, Housing Affordability, Utility Poles, and probably a few more that I could think of on that list. But, you know, those, those I think we need to determine whether or not there should be some level of priority in 21, 22 fiscal year.
So on Tannery, Sagamore, I don't know what green energy investment is, I don't know what this is about.
Sorry, solar, solar.
Solar, okay. But solar, at, at, at the airport?
Yeah, and that's a.
That's, that's Knox County.
Well, that's a conversation we have to have now.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's good, it's good.
I'm just trying to, to figure out.
Yeah.
So my preference would be to use a, first in, first out, right? Try to, try to address those projects that have been lingering.
Yeah, I think.
If we can, as much as possible.
I think green energy investment is not gonna be a huge staff sucker upper.
No, no. And I, I think that's more of a policy decision the select board needs to make, and then we can just run with it.
So that one.
Low, low level.
No. I think Tannery and Sagamore Farm, they're loaded.
Yeah.
With, with hours because, depending what tack you take, of course. But we know in Tannery, we shelved it in April, when it, the whole thing didn't come together in the time period we had for a June election especially. Question here is whether it's a priority to pick it up again and where we left off and try to further develop those three acres in, in shape of form or not. And, and that, either way, the men hours here are not small. They're, they're rather, can be draining. We have proposals, two, three, we have proposals. We can, we can, you know, we can do all kinds of actions with it, but the real question is, is does the select board want to proceed with what we started early this year, last fiscal year, to develop those three acres? Or have them developed, I should say.
And what are, what kind of, how does the grant fit in to this? Which parts of this might not be open for, like, what do we not have a choice about? I mean, we can always give money back, but.
Yeah, I mean.
It's hard to give money back.
We just need to figure out what, what the use is gonna be on that site. Because whatever the, the use is really impacts what we're gonna need to do in terms of remediation.
Correct.
How much time do we have left?
About an extension of a year, so.
Next September.
So September 2022.
Yeah, correct, 22. Yeah, but, but the work has to be done by that point in time.
Yes.
And it's ideal, it's always been, we've said a thousand times, it's ideal to have the uses defined. So because they can, depending on the use, they can mitigate the cost of remediation.
There is one part that we know needs to be addressed, that we know the town is gonna have to be responsible for forever, which is the contamination on the riverbank.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And so I, I don't think that's gonna be a hard thing to get other grant funding for down the road either, but that's the only thing at this point that I really care about, making sure that we solve eventually. And the rest of it, I think, I might have to decide.
It just seems to me we put in so much investment at Tannery already.
We should do it.
In terms of proposals, in terms of CDOC study and helping us, and all this activity, it would be a bit of a travesty to kick this can down the road.
Yeah, I agree.
That's my feeling. I, I think, and I'm not suggesting we open up Pandora's box and start from zero. We start from where we left off in April and bring it to the select board with Audrey with some ideas on what are our options going forward, and let the select board make a decision on that. And that will determine also, by the way, what the, what the manpower requirement will be, and how we go with it.
We need to get that off of this sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I.
We need to get it done.
I guess, I feel like a big lesson learned from the exercise in the last exercise that we went through in reviewing, there is no, there just isn't a Goldilocks proposal. You know, and.
Depending on your perspective, Audrey.
Absolutely, yes. There might be somebody who feels like there is, like, of what we got, it was a Goldilocks proposal. But I guess, I think we tried to fashion something like that last time, and that caused a lot of issues. So I think that.
Caused it to blow up.
What I would recommend is that this board sort of reviews the three that we have on their merits and decides whether you want to move forward with any one of them.
Yeah, and part of that is the criteria on its impact on the town and financially as well as otherwise, because there are options. It would be financial impact on the town, and the board has to decide whether it's acceptable or not. Anyway, so with that.
We have a plan for this.
I think, you know, we, we've done so.
You guys both want to do it, like, Matt, do you want to, are you, because I might not have as much energy this time around. So other people have to, like, you guys want to take on the Tannery? I just want to hear that. It's good to hear.
No, I think, I mean, first of all, I think.
I know Mark does, but.
I need, we need to bring it to, we need to address it. I think there's a lot of expectations.
Oh, yeah, that's why we went for it.
That the board comes up with a plan for the Tannery. I think defining the uses is a, is a good idea. Starting where we left off is a good idea, and just take it to the finish line.
Let people vote on, I, my old thing was always just like, if we could just let people vote on something, that would be a victory that the select board has never succeeded at, like, even just getting it to the point where we could let people vote.
Yeah.
And remember, remember, voting is November and June typically, right?
Yeah, so if we.
And if we're gonna do anything for November, it has to be ready in September.
Yeah, so with the grant ending in September. Yeah, so with the grant ending in September, yeah, but with the grant ending in September 2022, we can, we would be ready, ready for November 2022 potentially.
Actually, no, because the only statement we made was, you really want to know what you're building so you can more surgically affect the remediation costs.
Right.
If you put it a big foundation, you don't have to remediate that piece.
Right.
That kind of thing. So reduces costs. But anyhow, Tannery sounds like it's, you know.
It's like, like it stays on the priorities.
Sagamore Farm, you're welcome to comment, Matt, if you want to.
Sagamore Farm is.
I was going to force him to, but.
He was, looked like he was going to say something.
What are we doing?
It's okay. I'm not shy, as you all know.
I know Matt's motives and I've gotten hit in the side of the head from it before. Just kidding.
But you speak up if you think you're like, you guys, we shouldn't be doing this at all.
I'm not shy in any, I'll even go right into the microphone. Not shy in any manner, shape, or form.
I know that Sagamore Farm.
So I guess, I mean, I'm kind of unclear, so is everybody?
Henry.
Well, yeah, is everybody, do we want to set up another, like, do we want to do this at a Select Board meeting? Do you want to have another workshop or?
These things have to get, does anything have to get kicked off in order to, to?
To do the Tannery?
Like, if, yeah.
I kind of built in knowing that this was something lingering that need, like, in one, one way or another had to get.
Let me ask you a question because Matt, Matt shy.
No, we're right behind you, Mr. Renner.
In our discussions, you have a plan that I thought, a plan coming from your office that I thought was a real workable plan and maybe the best solution moving forward if we.
I think that that should be, like, we, we should, you should all kind of look at what you have in front of you currently, make a definitive final decision on that.
Yes, exactly right. We go to the definition of where we, how we want to proceed. Open up the coffers as you start, relative starting over or take what we've got and play with it going forward, et cetera. We do need to bring that to a Select Board.
But it's the status of the current plans because I keep hearing.
Proposals, current proposals, not plans.
The current proposals will be verified before we have this discussion.
Okay.
Cool.
Because I've heard that there are questions about those.
Yeah, I've heard the same rumors as you.
Of course, there are going to be questions. It's been, there's been.
Whether they're continuing or not, and I'm, but it'll, it'll come up when we next officially discuss it, I believe.
Sagamore Farm, Audrey.
Back to Tannery for one moment. I mean, I'm just, in the sense that we need to walk it back. So, I mean, some basics in terms of putting out an RFP that we would want to have our agenda set up. For instance, are we selling this land? Are we putting it up for a 75-year lease? You know, just some basic things. What is the, to your point, Bob, you know, what are the uses? What do we want to happen there? Because having been on the planning board side of this, you know, we better figure out what we want before we put out an RFP because we have a lot of town business to do, a lot of ordinance changes that might have to happen ahead of even putting out an RFP.
Correct. Well, those were considered as some of the previous RFP that we sent out, but we'll review that again and, and we'll start with what we have and how we got there, including the points you make and clarify that and decide the path forward with the Tannery. That will be the topic of the next, when we get to a Select Board item, probably in August.
So what I just heard is that we don't really actually have consensus on what the next steps would be?
We don't, we don't have to have consensus beyond three. We don't need five, but we're going to, we're going to revisit where we, where we were, where we left off and take, pick the path forward to start with. Basically, I hear three of us saying that we want to take what we already have and maximize that.
I guess what I was saying, trying to say is I care a lot about what Matt thinks too and what the others think because I'm feeling a little bit worn out on that topic. And I think that it, one thing that wore me out last time around was that we got to the end without consensus and that that wasn't really a place I wanted to be in going to the community and it just takes a lot more time and emotional and mental energy when we don't agree. And so if some of us think that we need to start all over again and send out a new RFP and get zoning, because what happened last time was we had all these people that were like, housing would be really great. And then we're like, well, housing isn't, you know, you can't have that there. And so then, anyway, so I just think we should be aware that it is going to take longer for.
It may. All I'm saying is we're going to, the Select Board, and in a Select Board meeting, not in a workshop, we'll have to make a decision about how it wants to move forward with where we left off in April.
Okay, so what, what I'm, what I'm hearing is you need from, from me. I need to write a memo kind of saying, this is, summarizing what, what we did, what we have, where we're at, and what.
We have to start with, do we still have valid proposals?
Yes.
Start with that.
Because that's, yeah. And we have two new members that need to be brought totally.
And, and what you believe was the basis for the RFP, for those proposals and what was behind it. If you want to change those criteria as a Select Board, the Select Board meeting, we can certainly do that and go forward and resend out an RFP, which if it takes longer, it takes longer. That's what has to, it won't happen for November or even June, or maybe June.
Yeah, and I just really don't want to do that.
No, well, that's a decision we can make as a Select Board meeting. All we're trying to determine here is that it is a priority. We don't want to put it on the shelf and that's the only thing I heard consensus on.
Yes.
Right, it needs to be an agenda item so we can talk about what the next step is.
Exactly.
And it's not excluding what Matt shared with us.
No, no. Well, in a Select Board meeting, you could even change your mind during a Select Board meeting.
I do change my mind.
Me too. Oh, yeah, I think we should put it on the shelf. Yeah, we can, that's what the Select Board meetings are for.
Yeah.
All right, but we've determined that and we spent 15 minutes on it, so let's go on to Sagamore Farm.
It's, it helps, sometimes 15 minutes at this stage, we're just getting to, you know, it does actually help. I know it's all about efficiency and just getting through this list fast, but.
I like being up, being up on Matt, he enjoys it. Anyway, Sagamore Farm for the fifth time.
When does that happen?
I was like, what? Hold on.
Six times Sagamore Farm.
Yep, so we did a request for expressions of information, or information, interest.
Interest.
Yeah, that is, expression of interest.
We did get some responses to that. We've had some responses since then. That's sort of an area where it's a very limited, or it's more limited than it could be because there's no sewer connection and it's particularly limited for the developing as affordable housing. And two of the, you know, expressions of interest responses we had were for housing. So.
Put it on the shelf.
You might be right. I hate to say it because the damn thing's been on the shelf for like 80 years.
It's lovely out there. I just mapped another stream.
How many years has it been on the shelf?
Are those problems solvable?
Fifty. Well, it was a gravel, it was a very functional gravel pit for the town for many years.
With money, anything's solvable. So that comes kind of back to the ARPA.
Just mentioned there, with money, anything's possible.
Why are we keeping Sagamore Farm?
We're keeping it, but not on the front banner.
It's 77 acres of valuable land. That's the bottom line. And it has a value to the town in one way or shape or form.
Ecologically and otherwise.
Ecologically and otherwise. And, and, you know, it's, it's been sitting there relatively unused, but there's interesting trails we'll put in.
I don't know, I've been there.
But it, but it's, but it's, you know, there is the complication of anything with the million dollars or chunk of change it's going to take to put in a sewage. It has no water supply either, so, but there are wells, of course, you're going to affect that kind of thing. And then there's all kinds of zoning issues on top of all that. But the real question is, yeah, do we, you know, it's, it's going to, it's, we've had expressive interest from certain individuals wanting to give proposals on it, in fact, what they would provide for, for the Sagamore Farm. The problem with expressions of interest, that's just what they are, is yeah, I'm interested and there's no meat in that because you really want to see a fundamental proposal that says, this is how we're going to fund it, this is what it's going to provide for housing or whatever it might be, for, for a ballroom or whatever it might become. There's all kinds of, but they have to provide something. We, we don't have that.
Yeah, basically.
What does Audrey think we should do, actually?
For Sagamore Farm?
I guess I.
I mean, it's a, it's a big planning effort, you know, no matter what we do. You know, and I would say if you're going to do anything out there, given the affordable housing issues that we have, I mean, it would be looking at the feasibility of bringing sewer out there and looking at, is there anyone to partner with to put affordable housing out there? But that's a big effort, that's a.
We don't even plow the sidewalk all the way though because of this stupid last Elm Street or High Street project where they put the poles in the middle of the sidewalk. So it is nice, there's a sidewalk all the way there, people could walk, but you get to a big section where, where the town can't plow in the winter and so how does that also? And we have to put utility poles back on the.
This seems to me to be one of those that goes on the list. If you put it on, something else comes off.
Absolutely.
But my concern is that we receive expressions of interest, so we should let these people know that we're shelving it for a year or whatever.
It's not dying, it's just being put in the bucket.
Agreed.
Or that they could do it, we could just be upfront, like, we're, at this stage, we can't add sewer out there. If you, if you come up with some super innovative, amazing wastewater treatment process where you generate your own electricity from it and, you know, maybe, but we can't at this point.
But even if they came up with a plan like that, it would still require a lot of effort from the town. So I, I would prefer to tell them, we really have no bandwidth to take, take it on, even if it's super creative this year.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Yeah, it breaks my heart, but I agree with you.
Me too.
I do feel bad because I thought a lot of what was proposed did, was great in a lot of ways, but they, I mean.
All right, but the rest, the rest of what's on this status to be determined is basically, well, not the rest, the, is the housing affordability thing. But I thought we were kind of addressing that with the housing affordability zoning ordinance amendments, is that related?
Well, again, that's another, that's another.
Chicken and egg?
It's a big, you know, the site identification incentivization.
Yep.
It's a big undertaking.
We need a housing trust that's separate from the town. That's what they did last, we can't have all of it going through the town with our form of government. That's what they figured out before.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, and it's kind of more, that would, I would see as it hopefully being more reactive if we have somebody approaching us with a project, trying to figure out like, you know, us developing an affordable housing TIF policy or something like that. There's really no need for us to do it now because there's nothing, nothing happening. I mean.
Let's just keep it in the hot standby list for opportunistically.
Also, what we say, like, we can say the trust funds, we should be encouraging proposals to come to the trust fund committee because there is funding available for that kind of stuff there, so.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, I, I think a good example of this, which is something that like, it could take up a lot of time, but it could be really beneficial, so I, I don't like to dismiss it just because we're really busy. So Knox County Homeless Coalition, they put forth a bunch of different projects to the county because they were, you know, trying to request their ARPA funds. And a lot of them, I saw some big, huge problems with and big opportunity, like, if they wanted to partner with the town, like, the town of Camden to do some of these projects, the outcome would be way better than the same project where they're proposing in another area. So it's kind of like, looking at that, you're like, well, do I get nosy and get involved and create more work for myself or do I just let them flounder a little bit? You know, it's.
This is opportunistic.
It's hard.
It's reactive, not proactive.
Right, right.
Anything about the utility poles?
What is a utility?
Oh, my God.
I know, I'm sorry. I just, I keep asking the same question. I know what.
So I put this.
What things that they put in the ground and.
And by the way.
It's on the list because.
You owe me a dollar each.
No, sometimes, sometimes Osprey get on them and the transformer.
And I lose my power.
So it seems so trivial and silly and like the placement of utility poles.
No, I know it's not trivial and silly because I have been approached about the placement of utility poles for people with wheelchairs and scooters and how we need to make sure that they can navigate the sidewalks.
And it's almost like every single time a pole needs to be placed or replaced, we need, like, Dave St. Laurent or somebody, the equivalent of, they're out there watching them, pushing them, telling them, don't, no, don't.
Don't give up.
Yeah, like, no, don't.
Excellent.
Move it a foot to this side, no, like.
I come from a country where we bury the knife.
It's crazy.
All available town resources should go toward the utility pole.
Oh, my gosh.
Problem. Hire more staff if you need to.
Isn't this a public works issue or not?
A lot more.
Oh, it's, I mean, I can't even tell you how crazy.
Victor Doudara and Dave Miramont and the whole gang in here to talk about it.
I mean, we, I went, you know, I did the, this long sort of submission to the PUC with the rulemaking about like, can you consider this, that, and the other? Here are examples of like worst practice in Camden, you know, like every little project we have where like somebody is like near us where we're working on something and a utility pole needs to be replaced, they will, to any opportunity to stick it in the sidewalk and be like, oh, sorry, that was the best we can do unless, like, you're breathing down their neck. And it's, yeah, I don't, I mean, anyway, I guess I put it on there just to show that, like, it is a project every single time.
But it's an ongoing thing, so, so it's like, you know, we can't, we can't escape.
It's almost like a drop everyone they want to place a utility pole.
Okay. So we, we table Sagamore Farm, green energy investment, but it's not really tabled because it's just a policy for the Select Board. And housing affordability. Utility poles is going to be ongoing.
Correct.
We're waiting for Harbor, Lemon, Morris, and the Tannery, we agreed to.
So Audrey, if you would, just annotate, annotate that to your list and that'll be our policy statement for 2021, 22. We're, we're quickly running out of time here because I wanted to keep it to an hour and a half and we started a little late thanks to whatever. But it just, you know, I.
That's his name.
Mark didn't cause the internet, no, I'm sorry, the network or the AV.
I wanted to be the problem.
Let's find someone to blame.
Just a couple of homework, which we don't have to finish today. Just a, one of them, one of them is a warrant signing policy.
Yes.
What I'm going to, what happened, Matt?
Anyone but Bob should be able to.
Matt and Sophie, when we, when we hit COVID last year, we had a policy to submit signatures on documents and because of not a lot of people coming in the office, we agreed that only one person was adequate to sign payroll warrant and only one person was authorized or had to sign the accounts payable warrant and no more signatures required. In the past, what we had had, and I would suggest we go back to, is we had one signature on the warrant for payroll which released the checks. The second signature required for filing, just to have a second person looking at the warrant, that's what our policy was before. And the policy on AP was one signature to release the checks, two more signatures, three because of state statute on the AP warrant for filing purposes. So that's what, by the way, this was brought to a Select Board, just wanted to update you for YouTube.
I thought it was, I thought it was, this was all the, because Roberta got tired of hearing things after the fact when Select Board members would come and they would say, why do we do this? And so then she started saying, you know what, everybody just has to sign off on the warrant. Is there really state statutes that says three of us have to sign it?
That's what I'm told by Janice, that there is a statute out, and I didn't check it to see.
She's usually right.
Yeah, I agree. But the difference is we're, well, frankly, I feel individually adamant that signing, approving the signing, the issuing of checks is a little too late to be taking financial control. We, on a monthly basis, we review the financials of the town to see what's in on budget and not. And Jody is supposed to give us an exceptions report on anything that's going amiss. That's the control philosophy. But to the signatures, I mean, we can do anything we want, but I highly recommend any one of us can sign either of those two for issuance of the checks. They're already written and cut. The money's already been spent. Payroll, well, we could debate that, but by the way, reviewing is a great learning curve, by the way. It really is. But, but to file those documents with additional signature on the, on the payroll and two more per state statute on the warrants. Now, I'm sorry, the AP warrants. I will try to work with, also with Marlene again to raise the flag when warrants are available. Payroll warrants are available almost every Tuesday of every week. The AP warrant will probably do twice a month. And that's what we've done before, just so you know.
Yeah, they used to be monthly and they, they used to be weekly and they changed it twice a month.
I think twice a month is plenty.
Bob, could you send out the, when we first came on, you were sending out an email saying, just a reminder, saying, hey, it's tomorrow, you need to come by or you, if you, and that[1638.32] that was, that was super helpful, I'm glad to do it.
No, absolutely, no problem at all, that's why I was, my last email, I said, we'll discuss it here, because I wanted to do a policy, and then there'll be emails sent out, not on payroll warrant, that comes out every Tuesday.
Okay.
Payroll, every Tuesday, and only one of us has to sign that to get the checks released.
Okay, so we don't need the reminder email?
Don't need a reminder, I don't think we need a reminder there.
I, I find that I get huge satisfaction when I can beat Bob to the signatures.
Again, as long as you gentlemen have a, some kind of boy bonding thing that's going on, I'm good, that's good.
When I, when I get there before he does, I'm, I'm a happy guy.
I'll buy him coffee.
I was actually going to propose that we, we take turns, and that we set months.
It's no problem at all, you know, they sit them.
I also think, like, no, we've tried this, it doesn't work.
I mean, I'm just not the great, I'm.
Come on, we decide to again.
I do so much better, like, solving a crisis, like, we need somebody to sign, and I can, I, I can rise to the occasion and stuff. I'm not as good at, like, being like, okay, it's my month to sign.
I'm good at that, I'm like.
You let them know when you can't make it.
Just because we just need one, or two signatures and three signatures to file, doesn't mean that all five of us can't sign it and look at it anyway.
Correct.
Right, and we can raise objections then, too.
There's not a limit.
Absolutely.
I go in and review and sign, no matter how many signatures are on.
Yeah, I highly encourage, especially Matt and Sophie, it, it is a great learning curve, you can do, I don't understand why this overtime was paid here, and ask Jody, she's great, she can give a quick answer, so, Marlene on the AP, same thing. The problem with the AP.
Why are we buying so much from Amazon when that pretty much goes against all of our values?
Exactly, well, what's this big check to false, you know, you know, they're good questions to ask, they really are, because you do learn a lot from it.
So it's, it's the Thursday afternoon, what's the, what's the cutoff for this?
Well, there is, there is a cutoff.
Okay, for this?
Except for, Marlene will start screaming.
Sometimes Janice too.
You guys get in, teasing aside, I mean, the idea, I mean, what I was saying about the email is that you guys have this basically covered.
Oh, you do.
Okay.
Well, I happen to.
Not always, he's almost always here, I tried it.
You'll know from somebody, they, they are pretty, one of them, if Bob doesn't send an email, sometimes it'll be from Janice.
Once in a while, we just happen to be out of town.
Marlene might send a text message if it's really desperate.
Just want to make sure you're covered.
I just want to encourage you all to take a look at it once more.
That's happened.
You don't have to, it's not a big deal, but it's covered. I just want to make sure we're conformist.
What's up, who comes down and signs?
Exactly.
Another thing, which is a homework, which I, when I don't really understand totally, is this rules of order for select board meetings, it's been something that they, we have all done, out in Vinnyton for the last 82 years, and this is something that's just of formality, I'm not even sure what's required, but what I'm going to do is just give you each a copy of it, take a look at it, and we'll put it in the agenda one of these days, we decide to modify it, use it, or throw it away.
The, the reason for it is because sometimes Bob will use it against us later in the year, and when you say, like, well, why are we doing this? And he'll say, well, we all agreed to the rules of order, or sometimes Audrey or Janice will say that too, like, you know, it says things about, like, how we're going to notify people about meetings, and it all seems very unimportant until somebody's upset that it wasn't on the, you know, nobody knew it was going to be on the agenda, and then we're like, well, we should really look at the rules of order thing.
These are specific above and beyond Robert's rules, looking at these at this point.
Yeah, kind of like what we all agree to as a group.
Rules of best practices.
By the way, in my opinion, it should reference Robert's rules, so any comments you might have on this, be prepared to discuss them in a current.
You didn't give me a copy.
You know, you know by heart.
Point out, maybe, like, there were things before that we talked about, should, notices of public hearings was a, was a hot topic, and, because what we've been doing is spending all this money, let's see, where is it, like, you know, it's just, okay, well, we always put things in the Camden Herald, but that was causing us to, sometimes, because of their print schedule, not be able to get it in time.
We needed a daily paper record, not a weekly paper.
And we were focusing on doing that, rather than, like, the main way that people find out about things, which was, like, our website, and so this is where we would say, you know, as a group, we're going to make sure that it always goes on the Facebook page, if we want to say that, or if it always, or we're going to try to do this, but we're going to commit to doing this, or we're going to put things in the Free Press, or the Kennebec Journal, or.
Well, we talked about draft agendas transmitted, you know, should be here, so, so, to local newspapers, well, local newspaper is a relative term to Allison's point, the Camden Herald prints once a week, and if you don't have it ready by Tuesday, you're SOL, so, that's a, that's a problem, and posting it on a wall someplace, it doesn't work. We have, we have a new website, we need to take advantage of it.
Yeah, the website is great.
We haven't gotten to the point yet of being able to utilize it for notifications, hopefully we'll get to that at some point in time, that may solve all of our problems, but, yeah, just take a look at this, we'll bring it to a select board meeting for comment, I don't want to jump it on you now, but I think it, it, it feels a little weak to me, and I think we're missing some points, so that's the item, the last thing we.
Or like, remote participation, we would all, this might be where we would say we're going to.
That's going to be a separate draft policy.
I might want to hold this whole thing up over that issue.
Yeah, I don't care, because you don't, you don't obey it anyway, no, we, we do have to have a separate policy for the remote thing, and that'd be drafted, it could be attached to this.
Why?